Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Here.
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 Okay, item four announcements, acknowledgements, communications and reports. I don't see anything listed. Does anyone on the commission have any? Okay, hearing none, we will move to adoption of the agenda.
Support.
Any questions or comments about the agenda? Call the roll, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
York?
Yes.
This is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. If you would like to address the commission, you're welcome to come to the microphone.
Ruthie Stevenson, sixty-nine Bain Street. When I hear the comments and I understand, it is a public street, but it's not an all-day parking lot. Cars start coming in as early as six-thirty in the morning and they don't leave until, a lot of them, eight o'clock at night. And it just impedes the viability of the community. We can't have events, we can't, you know, if there's something going on and funerals and events at the church, not only just the church, in people's homes, all down that area. And even with the apartments, as it goes down Bain Street and turns into roads, all that's, you know, post office parking. When you have Meedle Street with no parking sign, that was a so-called solution back then. Oh, we'll put up no parking signs on one side of the street and they can park on the, you know, they weren't supposed to park on the other. Well, the neighbors don't have place to park because you got no parking signs on the other side. So if they park there, they have a possibility of being ticketed. So where is the solution? We can talk about, we've been talking about this for years. Been talking about it for years. And like you say, when that parking lot, where the trucks are, when they come out of there, it's empty all day long. A lot of those cars can go in there. I don't know what we're going to do. Have you gotten with the federal government, the postal service, to see what they can help? Get something done? That would be a good possibility. But, you know, it's 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 been going on too long. And it's just like, you know, I'm hearing the conversations here and I'm not too happy with some of the comments, you know, and we have to start working more so together with the needs and the concerns of the people in the community.
Hello, I'm Clarence Blaze. Can you, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And I work for the postal service. I don't represent the postal service. I want to make that clear. I work for the postal service, but I'm the president of the labor union.
Sorry, can you give us your residential address and your, and your full name? Sorry.
Okay. I don't live in Mount Clemens. Does that make it different?
That's okay, that's okay.
Uh, my residential address?
It's for the record.
Yes, yes, three-seven-zero-nine-seven. Bremford, B-R-Y, N-F-O-R-D, Clinton Township, Michigan.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, been at, been at Mount Clemens post office since nineteen ninety-two, so I'm an old guy. So, I'm working with the postmaster Tracy Pegg on a number of issues, dealing with that. And, um, you know, our stance is the postal service should supply parking for the employees. There's a, all, there's just about two hundred employees that work out of that Mount Clemens location. And, uh, you know, we've went so far as to, you know, we've initiated a grievance, you know, a dispute. Uh, we believe that the post office should assist with paying for parking. Most of the people pay for parking and it's, uh, it's it goes about somewhere between twenty and thirty dollars a month from the local businesses. So we're, we are trying to, and I've met you before too, Ruthie, we're, we're, we are trying to get off of that, off the residential street. We understand that that is from, and I'm speaking for the union, not, not the postal service. Because I can get in trouble, so that's why I keep saying that. I don't want the postal service like, hey, you were at a meeting.
We appreciate it.
And it's the National Association of Letter Carriers, uh, for, uh, Mount Clemens branch. So we're, uh, trying to encourage employees to pay for parking. They, you know, if they itemize, they could get some tax breaks from that. We're also trying to get with the postal service, maybe they, uh, if it's twenty dollars a month, maybe they can contribute ten dollars a month to encourage uh, to get out of the neighborhood. So we, I agree with the position that we shouldn't have so many cars just flood the neighborhood. And it, and it's all day and it's been going on, the reason I brought up nineteen ninety-two, it's been going on since I started working at the postal service. So, so that's the, you know, thirty-something years. Uh, so we we are, uh, message, messages, messages received at least from the employees and the, and the labor union there. So, I don't know, um, I'm open, um, and, and Teresa, you, you've called me a couple of times and reminded me to, to be here tonight. So, I will, if my schedule fits, I will be here frequently at these meetings and, and working through it and, and you're welcome to share my number throughout throughout the month to try to help, help remedy the problem. So it's not, it's just that we just don't have a place to park. Postal service won't give us permission to swap out our mail, mail vehicle and park it there. They're concerned about the liability of us being on duty on the clock, getting in our personal vehicles, you know, and driving them and swap. So they're concerned about that, that liability. So that we, we don't get, parking is not supplied. Also, that alternative so far, uh, the postal service has not offered that. I know she's, Tracy met, told me she met with you, Greg, there on Friday, uh, to try to come up with some solutions. She mentioned, uh, that there was a lot that might be available. She didn't tell me where it was. So maybe I can get that information as to where this lot that you, you Greg discussed with Tracy. And I can go look at that and try to encourage parking there. I don't know if there'll be a charge, uh, for that. So if we can get that information, that, that would be great. But you will see me and then I will be available from the labor union side to try to get the problem fixed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Gloria Haller, two-sixty Cass. Two items. Number one, October twenty-first meeting, I asked a question, real simple question. What is the date of the last master plan? I got an answer November fourth, which is not unexpected. It had mistakes in it and it over answered. Because when you don't want to answer a question, well, you really answered the question and you're trying to lose a person in word salad. Got a piece of advice for you, for those who knew and forgot. And for those who never knew, I'll advise you, don't try to broom me. Because figuratively speaking, I'll take that broom away and beat you over the head with it. Don't lie to me. Ever. I will catch you. So, if you'd like to review your November fourth answer and make some corrections to it, I'd appreciate it. And this time, try not to grow a Pinocchio. Number two, another lie. Back in two thousand fourteen in August, you passed a millage change from fifteen to twenty mils, increasing our taxes by a third. Oh, it's temporary, don't worry about it, you said, number one. And number two, oh, we'll, we'll just do it incrementally, I'm sure. Commissioner Dempsey remembers how incrementally it went. Immediately they were right, right to twenty mils, didn't they? Yep. Lie, lie, lie. Get you all a bunch of Pinocchio noses, except most of you weren't on it. But you're kind of following suit. The other part of it is temporary. What do you mean by temporary? You wanted to find temporary for me? We're going on eleven years. Everybody's broke, except the city. They keep getting all this money, it's taxpayer money, but they get it from the federal and the state to fix up their little municipal masturbation project called the DDA. You need to get that on the ballot and let us vote to re roll back that millage from twenty to fifteen. And you need to do it next election. Or we'll know for sure, it's not just a Pinocchio nose. That committee, commission lied. Not that it'd be a surprise. Have a bad night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Hi, Matthew Miller, twenty-seven Dickinson, Mount Clemens. I live in the River Hills condominiums across the street. Lately with the formation of Manchester Mount Clemens LLC and the plans to revitalize the Riverfront Park and, um, relocate Simmer Hall, City Hall, rumors have developed throughout my community that the city intends to acquire our properties for future city developments. As a member of our association's board, I am seeking to end these rumors, to ensure our homeowners that their homes and investments are not threatened by the city and to, that we can make, that we can make, move forward to make our capital improvements that we are planning. Uh, in addition to all the other comments that were made, um, parking across from the post office and right next to the Vic Funeral Home is a city lot that I think the city could offer discount parking or extended meters, because they're all on route. They can't feed the meter while on route. Offer eight to ten hour meters that they could feed. There's so much underutilized parking in the city of Mount Clemens that we didn't need a parking structure, or study for that. Uh, and then, um, in regards to, I forgot the other thing, but yeah, we can solve that parking problem very easily with all the underli, underutilized parking throughout the city of Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Matthew, can you make sure that you leave us a contact information before, I mean, before you go tonight, um, so that we can call you about those rumors?
Oh, yes, thank you.
All right, thanks. Is there anyone else at this time who would like to address the commission? Uh, go ahead, it's okay.
Yes, this is, I don't know if I can.
It's okay.
If it's like a time limit, I know. This will, this will be quick. The other issue that I noticed happening is Deal Street, Deal Street, um, when we had, back in August, we had a letter carrier that was bit, and hospitalized. It wasn't severe, severe bites, but he had to be hospitalized for a short time for the dog bites. And I know that the mail was suspended, the mail was suspended and it was restored delivery with the particular address. I don't, I don't want to say the address.
Yeah, please do.
Publicly, yeah, okay, yeah. I know that, that sense, the particular address. Yeah, will not, will not receive mail. But what, what we're concerned is how can we ensure the safety? I know there was issue with this residence fence where the dogs would squeeze in between. So how would we ensure, uh, the safety if the dogs are out just in the yard, secured? Because when the dog bite happened, it happened, didn't happen on that residence. It happened down the, down the street, across the street. So that's why the, the entire street was, mail was suspended. So, that our concern is how do we ensure that? And I don't know if there's going to be action. Can there be action? I guess I should do it in the question. Can there be action to ensure that the, the fence is secure so the dogs can be secure, uh, at that, at that particular address? So that our letter carriers can be safe. I know they're, they're allowing us to pull up to a house, run, run up to the house, drop the mail and then run back to the vehicle. But it's just, uh, we have a lot of new carriers and, so we just want to make sure that, that it, that it's safe. And we did have a little bit of an issue getting, initially getting a response from animal control there too. So, and I hope, we're hoping that we can open that communication and have just, uh, uh, I guess a quicker response from animal control. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? All right, hearing none, we will move on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. Mr. Shipman?
Clarence stole all my thunder.
I know.
That's good Clarence, you got the ball rolling. No, it's good. So, as Clarence stated, um, we had some complaints. There was no mail delivery on Deal Drive. Oh, sorry. As Clarence stated, there was an issue brought up last meeting about no mail being delivered on Deal Drive um, in association with an incident, uh, with a dog that had bit a postal worker. So, um, in the meeting with the postmaster, that mail delivery should have resumed Saturday for all of Deal Drive, except the house in question. They have, um, agreed a while back to get their own P.O. box and pick up their mail from the post office. So that lack of, uh, mail delivery should have been taken care of Saturday. Uh, the other situation was post office employees parking on the residential streets, specifically Clinton River Drive and Bain area. I did speak with the postmaster on Friday about that as well. And she is, and I'm glad to hear Clarence that she talked to you about it because now I know she did what she promised. And hopefully you can work it out. The city is here, I'm here. Whatever we need to do to figure that out. The lot that I had mentioned to her was the Town Square Lot, which is right directly behind ten and twenty South Main. And there are, um, stickers available for that. You can buy it for seventy-five dollars a quarter. If you don't want to pay the per meter parking, um, if it's something they're not going to use every day and they don't want to do that, um, it's paid by app now. So you can just download the app on your phone. You can pay, you know, ahead for the whole day, or it'll actually alert you when the meter's going to run out and you can just add more credits to it. So, pretty simple app for that. And that is it.
And we had a work session.
We did have a work session.
We had a work session that we discussed it at length and have some future possibility issues like that, so. Are there any further questions, um, Mr. Shipman, about administrative responses? All right, we'll go ahead with approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
York?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
All right, moving on to general business, nine A, approval of charity gaming license, McLaren Macomb Healthcare Foundation.
I move to approve the local governing body resolution of charitable gaming license to McLaren Macomb Healthcare Foundation.
Support.
Mr. Shipman?
The McLaren Macomb Healthcare Foundation assists McLaren Macomb Hospital by acquiring medical equipment and providing numerous services for patient care. The foundation is requesting to conduct a millionaire party this year at their principal fundraiser, the Crystal Ball. As a result, they must apply for a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan and provide a resolution from a local government unit recognizing it as a nonprofit organization in the community. McLaren Macomb Healthcare Foundation is located at one thousand Harrington in Mount Clemens and has been recognized by the Internal Revenue Service as a five oh one C three organization since nineteen eighty-five.
And we do have Ms. Kimberly Jarvis here today with the McLaren Foundation. So if anyone has any questions about the application, we have the expert. Anybody have any questions or comments? All right, call the roll, please.
Crapp?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
York?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Go to nine B, two thousand twenty-five CDBG allocations.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Shipman?
The city may allocate up to thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars in community development block grant funds for public service organizations for the two thousand twenty-five fiscal year. The city may also apply for one or two capital projects, each with a maximum request of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A public hearing was held on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. City administration proposes the following allocations. Purchase of fire rescue equipment in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Currents community center playground expansion in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And city Mount Clemens senior recreation programming in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding the allocations?
I've noticed that a number of the other communities, um, did, uh, give to the interfaith volunteer caregivers. I do feel that since each completed task, the cost is about fifty-three dollars. I do feel that one thousand five hundred ninety dollars is very, a very good investment for us to make to help seniors who are having issues with tasks around their home. Um, I believe that is one of the lowest, um, requests that they'll be received. And so I was wondering, I wanted to open it up for discussion if others were interested in allocating twelve thousand one hundred ten dollars towards senior recreation programming and one thousand five hundred ninety dollars towards interfaith volunteer caregivers program.
I think that's a a good idea. I, it really bothers me that last year and this year, we both, everything went to the city of Mount Clemens and all these organizations come in and make their pitch and we kind of. So I really think this, the interfaith council is a great organization. It's for seniors. I, I like the idea.
I am reluctant to use CDBG funds for anything other than funding our already underfunded city. All of these charities are amazing and do amazing work. And I think it is in our best interest to find more ways to support them. But it feels like a drop in the bucket where providing recreation for seniors, our seniors here in our city is of an underappreciated importance. Isolation is the number one indication or indicating factor for abuse and neglect of seniors. And recreation programs like this are the kinds of things that get seniors out and get them involved so they don't have to rely on interfaith caregivers as much. If we had enough money, I'd love to give it all to all of them. But I think, given the very small amount we have, I think it's prudent, even if regrettable, that we keep it all in recreation until we can get some more money somewhere. Now, if there's some grant opportunities to partner with them or something, I, I think that's something that we need to start more aggressively looking for. But I think with this, I, I'm inclined to keep it in recreation. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't be like terribly upset if it went to them either.
I'd, I'd like to add that I think, I think I'll, Eric, everything you said was on point. I mean, I do believe that there are many organizations doing incredible work in our community. But I want to remind us too that most of them are located in our community and all those nonprofits don't pay taxes. But a lot of them utilize our municipal services quite a bit, especially if they have a shelter, especially if they have. And so I do feel as though we contribute to them by providing them a home in our community and giving them that donation of their taxes not being part of our budget. And, uh, and so I, I, I don't want to sound crass because I understand that, like I said, all those organizations are amazing. And if I could write personally a check to every one of them, I would. But I, I feel as though we do our part for the nonprofit community by housing most of them. So, that's my.
One of the reasons that I like that idea is because interfaith does help the residents of Mount Clemens. And I know there have been situations where they ran out of money. And somebody who needs a grass cut couldn't get the grass cut. Then they end up on the, city grass cutting thing, which is expensive. So that's why I kind of, I, I agree, it's a drop in the bucket. That, all of the requests were pretty much a drop in the bucket when you stop to think about it. But it is a program that does help seniors and I think there's a little, a big need for help with your home when you're as you get older.
Yeah, that's something in the Office of Senior Services, the County Office of Senior Services, the need always exceeds capacity. You know, the OSS got a couple of grants for that from four community foundation. Because the way government works, like, you can only budget for what the need is of the previous year. Like, you can't. So they're always falling short on the need and interfaith caregivers helps cover the folks that OSS can't. But again, it's.
Does anyone want to offer up a friendly amendment to the current motion?
I agree with you. I think in the years past, uh, the CPTG funds were a lot more. I can remember way back when we used to get a nice chunk of that. And we could then distribute to a lot of the, um, nonprofits. But each year it just seems to be coming less and less. And we have a large senior population. And I think what we're doing with our, with the money is helping our community and the seniors in the community. So I feel good about that part. So I would recommend that we keep it with the recreation department.
Another thing too, I'm thinking of is, um, we utilize interfaith also for, um, resources, but there are so many other resources available. So, I, I agree. It's, I am torn because you do want to help those and yet you really want to take care of home first to build. But another thing we could do is, um, we can volunteer or we can get at least five people, if each one of us just got five people to sign up to be a volunteer for interfaith. That would help. Because at one time they had a little waitlist because they only have limited people that'll come in and vacuum or sweep. It is amazing things that they need, um, or if they need rakes. But at one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, I also can see a couple of fundraisers to cover that. Easy to give them that money that we, whatever happens, if we decide that we're going to use it for recreation. My, my thought is just not to vote is to do. So we can volunteer to help them or we can volunteer people to help them. Or come up with a few suggestions for these nonprofits or attend one of their fundraisers and that way we gave as well.
Or donate to them.
Or donate, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, Joe.
Yeah.
I know you guys will help.
And because Mount Clemens is so small, I hate to hear that somebody has to pay the city that high bill to get their grass cut unless they were just one of those landlords outside of the area. But if they were a resident, the community should be getting together to help each other out. Now, in my situation in, in the neighborhood, it was a landlord thing. I don't, you know, we ain't not even there. Don't care. I'll just pay the bill. I don't care. But we've helped cut each other's grass and so forth. And so that's what I'm saying. We gotta, we, we just have to do a little work. That's all. This is really, this was hard. A hard decision.
Is there anyone else who has any questions or comments about this one?
I think everyone's made really good points about this. And it is true, I mean, there are a lot of really great nonprofits here. Um, a good number of them are, are housed in Mount Clemens and we do give to support them. Um, I think that, um, I, I do believe that there's more, I guess we could, um, I outside of this. And I understand for the senior programming, so, um, it was just a suggestion. You know, I, I, at least it's good that we could bring attention to the need for this in the community. So I do believe that there is a, there is a strong need for all these things, but in particular people who need assistance with those minor repairs around the house. That's, that's just as important as um, it's recreation, it's up there, so.
I think we should have listed teenagers, I'd, I would, when you said five people, I'll volunteer too. We got some town on their hands. Alright, thank you everyone, uh does anybody else have any questions or comments? Alright, call the roll please.
McGarrettie.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Calhoun. Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes. Alright, item C, approval of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five specialized services operating assistance program contract between SMART and the city of Mount Clemens. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the two thousand twenty-five fiscal year specialized services operating assistance program third-party contract between suburban mobility authority for regional. Transportation and the city of Mount Clemens has presented and authorized the execution of the contract by the appropriate city officials.
I wasn't sure you were gonna make it through that one.
Attached is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five specialized services operating assistance program, third-party contract. Between the suburban mobility authority for regional transportation and the city of Mount Clemens. This contract is identical to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four contract and has been reviewed by the city attorney's office. The contract outlines the obligation of funds from MDOT through SMART to provide public transportation services. To persons with disabilities and senior citizens. And I know you probably feel like you voted on a lot of these lately, it's because they got a couple years behind. And this will actually tonight get us caught up to current. Yep, she did.
Uh, any questions or comments about the contract? Okay, you're in done, call the roll please.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor. Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes.
McGarrettie.
Yes.
Okay, moving to item D.
There's another one under there. Yeah, we, he probably should have separated them, there's both contracts are in the same.
Sorry, thank you for catching that.
Move to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five purchase of service contract between the suburban mobile. Mobility authority for regional transportation and the city of Mount Clemens as presented and authorize the execution of the contract by the appropriate city officials.
Support.
Attached is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five purchase of service contract between the suburban. Mobility authority for regional transportation and the city of Mount Clemens for the Mount Clemens Dial-a-Ride. This contract outlines the operating arrangements, arrangements between SMART and the Mount Clemens Dial-a-Ride. Please note that SMART will continue to subsidize the project up to forty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. And municipal and community credits for operating costs, this contract has been reviewed by the city attorney's office.
Questions, comments? Call the roll please.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun. Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes.
McGarrettie.
Yes.
Yes.
Good?
Good.
Okay, purchases and payments.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Cover letter or anything, but does anybody have any questions or comments?
What is the. Flying, it's not flying, light some pump for?
Lenny.
I probably said it wrong, so it's not in the budget, this one pump pump, twenty-nine thousand dollars?
Uh yeah, it's a some pump at the retention basin that burned out, we had three of them burn out there.
You had three of them burn out?
Yeah.
Three out of how many?
Three.
Three. Alright, of course, well, questions, comments? Okay, call the roll please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes.
McGarrettie.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Okay, moving to consent agenda. Call the roll please. It's okay.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes.
McGarrettie.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Okay, moving to city manager's report, Mr. Shipman.
City recently received plans.
I misspoke, right, I misint erupted, sorry.
You're allowed.
The city recently received plans for two new single-family homes to be built at one twenty-two South Avenue and one twenty-nine South Avenue. Once completed, these will be the first single-family homes constructed in the city since two thousand nineteen. Reminder, the city offices will be closed Monday, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five and observance of President's Day. Therefore, the next regularly scheduled city commission meeting will be held on Tuesday, February eighteenth. Refuge pickup will remain on schedule during the week of February seventeenth. Even though we don't need it because we're not getting any more snow, once snow is forecasted. Please remove parked vehicles from the streets and watch for the city to declare a snow emergency. When a snow emergency is declared, it is posted on all major news stations, the city's website and also on all our social media. Please look at one of those broadcasts or contact the city to determine if a snow emergency has been declared. Mount Clemens Parks and Recreation winter programming, including bingo nights, pickleball, senior walks and more, continue as we begin. The spring scheduling, please log on to our Facebook page or contact us at five eight six four six nine. Sixty-eight hundred for more information. The city clerk's office found out last week that there will be a school election for a bond proposal in Mount Clemens. On Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Voters will be asked to decide if the Mount Clemens Community School District shall borrow the sum not to exceed. Ninety-one million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars and issue its unlimited tax general obligation bonds. For the purpose of building improvements and technology upgrades for the district. Reminder that free rain barrels are still available for those residents in the combined sewer areas. Please go to the residence tab on the city website and click on rain barrel program. Once there, you can click on the interactive map to see if your address is in the combined sewer area. The form to request a rain barrel is in that same location. For those not in the combined sewer area, the city has special pricing with Michigan Rain Barrel. For Mount Clemens residents to purchase a rain barrel for one hundred and eighty-five dollars. The one hundred and eighty-five dollar package includes a fifty-eight gallon rain barrel, a rain barrel stand. A six-pack of mosquito dunks and free delivery. A discounted installation service for those needing assistance is also available for fifty dollars. The form to purchase a rain barrel is also on the website under the residence tab, rain barrel program.
Has there been a good response to the rain barrel? I mean, it's not exactly the season for it.
Right, we were all like a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty um, as of last week. Um, we've had two hundred plus, but a lot of them weren't in the combined sewer district. So that's when we reached out to Michigan Rain Barrel to see if we could get some kind of special pricing for those. Or if somebody wanted a second one that was in combined sewer districts.
We have what, a hundred and sixty or?
Hundred and sixty-eight, I think.
What's the turnaround time again, three weeks from the time they apply before it actually appeared?
What's that now?
What's the turnaround?
For. Oh, so what they, what they do, the reason it's free shipping is when they get, let's say, ten for Mount Clemens. They put them on their truck and they bring them in and deliver them. So it would be whenever they get enough to, you know, justify the drive.
So it's not Amazon Prime?
No, not, definitely not Prime. They'll give it a little time and hopefully get, I'm sure, ten or more rain barrels they would like before they. They make the trip, so.
Alright, anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman? Alright, this is the second opportunity for the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, residential address and abide by our two-minute rule. Um, if there's anyone who would like to address the commission, come on up.
Ruthie Stevens, excuse me, Ruthie Stevenson, sixty-nine Bain Street. I'll be waiting for some kind of reply or meetings or whatever. By the next election, by the next meeting. And if anything, can the community be involved in some of these meetings to have their response? To what they feel is going on, not just me, even though they've talked to me. But uh, I appreciate the ongoing response that you guys are doing. But we're gonna have to look at it as a. Public street, not an all-day parking lot.
Gloria Haller, two sixty Cass again, and for my second topic. Northwest quadrant has been the victim of sacrifice zoning for years due to. Poor planning and zoning, well, it's a way to get money, right? We get lots of industry in so we can support the rest of the city. Let me give you the state of Michigan because I've been working with them regarding going after the city about sacrifice zoning. A sacrifice zone is a community or an area that is exposed to high levels of pollution and environmental hazards. From nearby industries or military bases. The term is used to describe areas where the health and safety of residents. Are sacrificed for the economic gains of others. In our case specifically, mostly the southwest quadrant, at any rate. I need to talk to you about malicious compliance. Remember when I waited fourteen months for community development to get off their rear and. Address JB cutting, later makes some crop also, about the overgrowth. In the greenery in the alley. Some years ago and Gene Hannatuck, I'm sure you remember him, was the head of the committee, there was a community relations committee within the city. And when we were having trouble because of abutting properties. We had many, many meetings and a decision was made to put up a tree line, which was cedars and it was very nice. Take a drive down the alley sometime, you know, pry yourself away from your DDA and your other. Fun but non-productive projects and take a drive down the alley and look at it, malicious compliance. Now, I checked with cap and tree service before and after the situation was addressed. Or misaddressed, turns out, the way you solved it was to butcher the trees. You need to replace those trees, those were done at city, go away.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else would like to address the commission at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move to commissioner comments and we'll start with Commissioner Yor.
Thank you. Thank you to those who came out tonight, we. Myself and the others, we really appreciate hearing your comments and letting us know that you wanna hear something back at the next meeting, it's helpful so that. We can make sure we keep moving forward and I do love the idea of involving the community so that everybody feels a part of it. Thank you for the representing the workers and coming to the meeting tonight from the post office. Uh, I think Clarence is your name, so thank you for coming, it's really helpful to hear all sides of it. Great job at the ice carving uh weekend, last weekend, so thank you to all those people that worked hard to make a. The city look unique and that's always a fun time. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner McGarrettie.
Happy Valentine's Day coming up, everybody. Um, I'm, I'm grateful that um getting some reports that most people watch afterwards. And so I remember speaking about transportation, the free transportation to your doctors in Macomb County. That has truly increased for Macomb County, so if someone is sharing the good news. About senior services and the other services that Macomb County offers for you, so continue to share the good news. Um, with your neighbors, especially in Mount Clemens, I, I wanted to briefly. I wanted to briefly um, express uh Black History Month. And I just wanted to share a few names of those who have passed on that um. Played a significant role in black history here in Mount Clemens. And um Lord Will, in our next commissioner meeting on that Tuesday, um. I will announce those who are present here who has made black history and, and just to recognize them uh for this month. I'll start with one we all know, Mr. Bobby Hill. He was the Macomb County Board of Commissions from nineteen ninety to two thousand and six, he was the first African-American and. Then there was Dr. Rickman, Louis Rickman, um he was also um the first school board member and doctor in Mount Clemens. And he's part of the reason why I'm here. Um, James H. Cole was the first um city store in Mount Clemens right on Fesiden Street. It was called Bubble Coles and it is there and actually his granddaughter is renovating that um property, Penny Candy. Um Ernest Gant, um well, he was a resident of New Haven, but he worked with. Oh, his name slipped me, he uh Upshaw, here, they worked together and he was the first um. African-American police chief in New Haven and he worked very close with police department that actually. For those that don't know, was right downstairs here in the early sixties, almost died. Lee Williams was the first black uh Mount Clemens City Council, that was in the early seventies, not too long ago. Daniel Hughes, for those that went to King School, was Grant, that's right here in Mount Clemens. He was the first African-American principal, he came in from Lou Ray, Tennessee with a group. Of including James Thompson, my minister, they all lived in the same town and Mount Clemens was offering jobs. So he was one that came up and migrated and became a principal. Um, David O'Neil, if you remember, he was a, a dentist, he was the first black dentist in the area right there on Harper and Crocker. And he was the reason that I am now honestly afraid of the dentist. Um, Mr. Bonner Upshaw, the Upshaw family is still here in Mount Clemens. He was um the first police officer and a detective here, like I said, right downstairs in Mount Clemens. And one of the last that um is no longer here is my aunt, Arbilia Woods, she lived to be a hundred and seventeen years old. And it used to be called Kiabby Flats, that's over where like Greater Morning Star Baptist Church is. And if you go down Bain Street, there, that's the reason the street is called Bain, but if you ride past that White House, ninety-three Bain Street. She built that house with her hands, we lived in that house as um tenants and could understand that. Stuff wasn't really up to code or what have you, but it was amazing to learn the history afterwards. Of what they all had to um build their own houses there and the flooding came and whatnot. So those are just a few that I like to share, that was um black history right here in our city of Mount Clemens and there. You can still see some of the goodness that is still here, Mount Clemens is a good place to live. And so again, I wish you all a happy Valentine's Day and share love with a neighbor, do something nice for your neighbor this week.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Who's your for you?
You forgot one person. Who is that?
I'm sorry.
Sonny Ford.
Yes, and Roger Button.
Roger Button?
He's still alive.
That's right, sorry.
Truly a good friend, couldn't have been beaten by a better person.
By two votes?
Yeah.
Two votes.
But um, I also um appreciate the suggestions, Mr. Ho.
But um, I also um, appreciate the suggestions, Mr. Hoof and Clarence. Thank you very, very much for coming. I think with more involvement, we're gonna find. Again, it won't be the perfect solution, but we can find some solution that will alleviate the problem. And um, hopefully, if you can pass on to our postmaster that we appreciate everything, but if she could make it a priority, we would really appreciate it. And um, if we need to have a town hall or something, we aren't gonna probably have an answer by the next meeting then. But we could do that if we or some type of meeting give people an opportunity to come say their piece. But um, I think that there were some good suggestions and I hopefully we can. At least make an effort to alleviate this problem. And happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Dempsey.
I would like to um, remind everybody, this February sixth, there's gonna be a town hall meeting at the high school for their bond issue. I encourage everybody to come out because there's so much going on right now and so many rumors and. All that, um, to come out to the high school, it's in the old building at six thirty on February sixth. Um, so please make it a point to make yourself knowledgeable about this uh, bond that's coming up. Secondly, uh, the Cracker House will have, will be having our fundraiser, the Pottery Luncheon, April fifth. At Zucaro's, we're still looking for people who are interested in setting tables. And um, come out and enjoy a nice afternoon and you can contact the Cracker House. At five eight six four six five two four eight eight. And the tickets are fifty five dollars, but if you set a table, you don't have to pay for that. So we encourage you to come, it's fun day. That and happy Valentine's Day for those who celebrate it.
Thank you.
Greg, you don't, so.
There goes your Valentine.
I'm still waiting for my Christmas card.
I better stop this before it gets. Commissioner Calhoun.
Well, um, yes, happy Black History Month to everyone. Thank you, Commissioner McGarrett, for uh, sharing some of that history. Some of those names are new to me, so it's amazing to hear about the uh. The contributions they made to this community, uh, that their families are still making. Couple, uh, I believe last week in Warren, there was a homeless services roundtable. That I was able to host with the county commissioner there, uh, Commissioner Howard. And it was fantastic, uh, a lot of the nonprofits that provide services uh, to folks here who end up in our community. Uh, were there to talk about some of the needs that they have and some of the partnerships that they're hoping to uh, grow with the govern- with government at all levels. Um, so there was someone there from the HUD, there was someone there, of course, from the county commission, the state level. Um, and so, uh, hopefully, uh, these groups can continue to receive the support that they need to provide uh. The services, uh, in particular, street outreach like fam- um, Face Addiction Now. Uh, provides, but there are other groups that are also doing that, uh, that are much smaller. But they're the ones who are also out there going out and doing the work and so I just want to um, uh, shout out. Those organizations, Wave in particular, uh, with making sure that people uh, can get a shower and a hot meal. Um, helping them get transportation, um, because that particular shelter that they work with is in Warren. Uh, so I wanna shout them out and thank them for the hard work and oftentimes unnoticed work that they do. And I also want to encourage folks to um, if if you're interested in in being a part of the solution. Uh, to the homeless and unhoused epidemic that we're seeing in our community. Uh, please feel free to volunteer your time and resources uh, toward that. Um, other than that, everyone have a a safe February and thank you all for coming out. Uh, and and being a part of the decision-making process here in our city.
Thank you. Commissioner Rick.
Thank you, um. I uh, yeah, well, that's covered, okay, that that that, oh, right, city surveys, so. Uh, there's lots of different ways that you can contribute and help change the direction of the city. If the city puts out a survey, please participate if you can. It's not, online surveys are never gonna be the only answer, but it helps inform us. Uh, there's a recreation one, there was a parking one, um, as these surveys come out, the more responses we get. The better informed decisions we can make on your behalf. Um, I would like to specifically thank Curtis for continuing to serve on the Safety Committee. Carl for staying on with the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Frank and Richard for the continued service on the Ever Exciting Planning Commission. And David for continuing to serve on the DDA. Uh, if anybody's interested in serving our community. And shaping the direction we're going, uh, those boards, committees and commissions are a good way to do it. Um, so maybe rec- volunteer for one of those, some of the charities, help out at the Cracker House. Yeah, there's so many ways to help the community and I encourage everyone to get involved and encourage your younger people to get involved. Cause there's people that wanna get involved in the community and they just don't even know where to look. For those of us that have been in the volunteer world a bit longer, we probably have twenty different places to direct them, but we've gotta reach out to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank the recreation staff um, for the recent Frankenmuths trip. Um, it looked like a pretty great time. Uh, it sounded like there were some dueling pianos and some sing-alongs happening, uh, and some chicken dinners, so. I think it was a, it was a great um, senior trip uh, that was provided to uh, members, senior members of our. Community at no cost and so I'd like to, like I said, thank the recreation staff for making that happen. Um, the Macomb County Green Macomb Planting Program is available. Um, and in that you can, you can purchase low cost trees and strawberries for your home if you're a Macomb County resident. So, um, I highly suggest going to their website, Macomb County uh, Planning and Economic Development. And on their website is a, um, is all the information with a brochure of what they're offering and how to order. Or you can call Macomb County Planning, or you can go on social media and um, it is posted under theirs, Macomb, uh, Green Macomb. Um, I want to think, um, I wanna thank the city staff for hearing, um, and. Hearing the concerns of the residents um, about the city, um, about the post office parking and for making sure. That they um, you know, contact the post office even though it's been difficult to try to. To try to get some people, you know, connected with them, so um, I really appreciate the deal, the. Like stick to it and uh, and and from the city manager's office. Uh, because I believe that they've been working hard to try to um, figure out a resolution. That tries to make everyone happy, which is difficult. So, um, I want to, I want to thank them because I know that they've been working on a lot of issues, but uh, the post office. Parking issue and the delivery has been a priority that they have been um, making sure happens. Um, I wanna encourage everyone to attend this school bond town hall. Um, if you look at your, um. If you look at your taxes, uh, because it is a concern with. Uh, we see it all the time on social media, people complaining about their high taxes. And if you look at those, the school debt is a very significant chunk of your tax bill. And so, um, I want everyone to make sure that they are informed of what that bond would mean. For the cost of your taxes. Um, and so that town hall again is this Thursday. Um, at six thirty PM in the um, school.
Large Auditorium.
Large Auditorium, right, which is on the. Old section of the high school. So, make sure that you come and listen and hear the presentation of the superintendent. I met with him last week. Um, so I'm, I want to make sure that we encourage every resident to be informed by this because it is on a May special ele- well. A May election, so that is, there will not be anything else on the ballot. Nice, right, there's nothing else on the ballot, so um, we wanna make sure that it gets the attention that it needs in the voter turnout that it. That it deserves.
Any idea whether they'll be letting people come in the front building, um, in the old section? By the large auditorium and not, not in the side.
Off the side parking lot, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be hard to be under the back to find your way there if people weren't, you know, weren't familiar with it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. On that one. Um, and I also wanna mention, and I wanna thank Robbie from the public's, uh, from our. From all of our programming, from the cable network, um, because the public television television um, station programming is back up. So our meetings are being streamed on, not really streamed, I guess, but programmed onto the uh, local access channels. So if you are a cable subscriber, you do have access to those again and we are going to um, try and develop. Uh, some more programming along with um, the school and Robbie at Hunch Free. And we're gonna make sure that, um, you know, we offer some quality programming for um, residents. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Have a good night. Thanks, everyone. Meeting adjourned.